Please stand so we can have a pledge of allegiance and prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please still stand for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to come before you and do the work of this community, help us and guide us in our decisions, lead our decisions, and always be with us to do what's right. We ask that you be with the schools as the end of the year is coming, be with the children, be with their graduations, and just watch over and protect each and every one of them. Be with the farmers as they're out in the fields right now, protect them and help them as they're planting the crops, and we just ask that you have a special watch over them as well. We thank you for this great country we live in, we thank you for this great state that we live in, and we thank you for this great community that we live in, and we just ask that you always look over us and bless us. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Special announcements.
Yes, sir, we got years of recognition. Five years of recognition Kelly Carpenter, five years Tisha Whitezell, ten years of service Troy Strain, thirty years of service William Baldwin, and Human Resources or Kerry has asked that we recognize a one-year anniversary, so we're gonna go all the way back to January. All these people had one year in this year. Gopel Kachal, Jennifer Schaefer, Tara Hamilton, David Granger, Rebecca Camden, Natasha Washington, Kelsey Moss, Austin Day, Jason Neal, Cameron Hill, Janelle Hunley, Blake Mendenhall, Katie Bowman, Abigail Connor, Katie Kawicki, Evan Sharp, Abigail Matlock, Alexander Campbell, Tanya Pake, Donald Mills Jr., Drake Edwards, Sarah Washburn, Caitlin Sparling, Rosemary Hampton, Dakota Bess, Brian Pulcifer, and Jennifer Young. We thank all of them.
Those valuable resources are employees. Speaking of which, this is the beginning of National Corrections Officers Week, and we want to pay special recognition to our correctional officers and the valuable resource they are to our community. So if you see or know a corrections officer, please say a special thank you to them this week.
Mr. President, all my commissioner issues, I was going to speak about the correctional officers.
I beat you to the punch.
You did. I don't, I'm not sure that there's a job anywhere where people take more abuse than as a correctional officer. And they get a bad attitude most of the time, and most of the correctional officers, if not all, have a kind and caring attitude, and they are so many thanks to those residents at the jail or those inmates at the jail that sometimes they're, sometimes they're a psychiatrist, sometimes they're a psychologist, sometimes they're just an ear to listen to, but there are many, many thanks. And it's sometimes a thankless or thoughtless job, and I don't think the general population or the general community has any idea what they do and what they have to deal with. So I just wanted to say thank you as well.
Sometimes in the scope of a day, there are all the things you just mentioned. So we appreciate them very much. Okay. Approval of previous meetings minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved, please make sure you sign these. Okay. Is this very loud out there to you guys? It seems very loud to me. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Department of Business in report, maintenance department, Mr. Stone Street. Heat pump and equipment purchase.
Good afternoon. I don't have a whole lot new from the last meeting that we had, but I do have some updates. As far as some of the questions you had, as far as can we do this piecemeal, absolutely. It'd be the short answer to that, and you can't just go in there and change seventy-five heat pumps all at once.
Right.
The big question would be how much would you be willing to invest initially? As far as a good plan would be to do some of the infrastructure updates first, the new pumps, the boilers, the DOAS units, you could break that down possibly into the first phase, and then if you had a dollar amount that we could include some of the new heat pumps, we could get some of them in. One of the strategies with the heat pumps was to purchase in one big lump sum, you get a discounted price that way if you buy them all at once. We didn't want to lose that. So that would be a good approach if you wanted to break this up into two phases, if you wanted to break it up further, of course, we'd have to have another strategy. Wednesday, QPH actually built the jail, installed everything, it's there now. A lot of the people that have worked with QPH are still on payroll, so we're gonna have QPH come in, and hopefully we can get some kind of turnkey number as far as an installation cost, a budgetary installation cost, not a fine print number. And then we can be more accurate with how much the first phase would cost for us. If you would like for me to proceed that way, that's currently the direction that we're going. And that's all I really have for you at the moment until after Wednesday.
My question would be this, Bill. We're gonna have to do this. So if we do this, and we do it all at once, what I'd like to know is what's the price break we get from doing it in bulk versus breaking it up?
Yeah.
Get the biggest bang for the buck we can get, so to say. So that would be my question, is what's the price savings that we get?
One of the objectives of this inspection, too, is get a per item cost, like we can know how much is twenty heat pumps gonna cost, or how much is ten gonna cost versus twenty? How much are the boilers gonna cost? And how much is that installation gonna be just for the boilers? We can, we can break it down and get numbers that will be easier to determine what we want to spend and what we want to do after Wednesday. It'll, it'll take a few days to work up the numbers, obviously, it's a, it's a very, very big complicated project. So it, it will take at least a week to figure out how much we're gonna call, how much we're looking at as far as installation.
Do you believe by our next commissioner's meeting, we can have those numbers?
I believe we can have those numbers. They won't be, like I said, exact, but it'll be good numbers we can work with and decide then how much we want to.
Good idea.
Absolutely.
I appreciate all your correspondence, Bill, and, you know, I kind of was roughing you up a little bit over, over this, and I appreciate all your work on it.
That's not a problem. That is not a problem. All right.
We look forward to those numbers.
All right. I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next will be the Highway Department.
Please.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
I was listening to Cleo over my address. I was listening to the State Budget Committee down there, and there was, there were some entities that came in there and was asking for monies to do some project. One of them was, I believe, in Lepore, it was, if I'm mistaken, it was like playground stuff. I mean, there was, and I don't know if it's something that could go through the state budget, I don't know all the.
You say down there, where are we talking about?
Well, as far as money for the units for the jail. And is that something that could go through the state to say, hey, can we put it in a budget through them to do anything like that? There was, like I said, there were some entities that came about that was asking for money to put in the budget for the state to do some project locally.
I have asked the governor's office, and I've asked our state rep, I've even asked our federal rep about some, some dollars to help out with the jail, and so far I've been told.
Okay. I was watching, actually, interested in the IEDC, but because they're asking for monies.
Hey.
You know, but just.
I'm not afraid to ask. Good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Thank you. Anyone else for Amber comes up? Amber?
I just have two items today. The first item is the Community Crossings bid opening. We got one bid. It was from Ian B. Hating. The total bid is one million, nine hundred, seventy thousand, seven hundred, forty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. I would like to go ahead and request we award this with the caveat that I review the contract to make sure that it is adequate, but I would go ahead, ask that we go ahead and award this contract so that I can get this going.
Our community crossing was one point five?
Yes, but this is one portion of, we applied for two projects within the community crossings for our total match at one point five million. So this is the resurfacing portion of it, and then I'm hoping at next commissioner's meeting we'll let the, the second portion, which is the twelve fifty rehab project that we have on the northwest side. So yes.
Yeah, I, I would make that motion as you stated, as long as Mr. Wilson reviews as well.
Yes. Yep.
I'll second it.
There we have a motion and a second, all in favor of that motion.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And my second item is purchasing right away for the Bridge Fifty-Six project. So this is the bridge that is in final design. We will let that hopefully at the end of this year, in December of this year, part of that project, we do have to purchase some right away, which is under the umbrella of the existing contract that we have, the existing project. But we do have three parcels that we need to purchase right away. These have been assessed through our existing designer, and the, it's ready for purchase. We just need to go ahead and get approval and signatures from the commissioners. So all total, there's three pieces of property, they're just small slivers around this bridge that we need to purchase, and all total it's twelve thousand, one hundred dollars dispersed between the three properties.
Those are all three?
Yes, three, all three total is twelve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That has passed. You just need my signal.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would ask that I be authorized to sign a statement of the basis for just compensation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Amber.
Amber, was there anything else?
I have a thought.
All right, Plan Commission, Mr. Shealan.
I have one case before you this evening, case seven CZ twenty-four. It's a rezone at twenty-two oh two North Philip Street. This poor gentleman came to my office a couple months ago, wanted to add on to this property. We realized that his residential property was zone commercial, it's been zone commercial for years, and he just wanted to make it legal, so we're doing some housekeeping stories owning that two rural residential, and it was approved by the county Plan Commission a couple of weeks ago. It's up by, it's up by Kokomo Green. So I can see how in the past it got zone commercial, should have never stayed there.
It's nice when somebody comes and wants to make it legal after all these years.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, do I have a motion on seven CZ twenty-four?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
That case has passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Howard Haven.
Hey there. I'm here today to get Hammer Petty and Jennifer Ostetler approved to reside at Howard Haven. They both are Howard County residents, they've been assessed, and they meet the criteria as to limit upon your approval today.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Does that, does that make you bold, Jennifer?
This will be nineteen, so we will have one, one more room, but it's getting remodeled right now.
There you are. I would make the motion to accept both of those.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to new business.
I actually have something, I have something for the, for new business. This is our annual report that we send for the Congressional School loan, and it is, I, Jessica Seacrest, auditor of Howard County, certify that this report's correct statement of the condition of school funds of this county as shown by the records on file in this office, and the amount's twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. So I just need your signatures at the bottom.
Do you need a motion or anything to accept this?
Yes, yes.
Alan's shaking his head.
That'd be yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor to accept this report.
Aye.
This is accepted into the record, signed by the county commissioners. Amber, you ready for this?
I'm ready. Okay, I have two salary claims. So for April nineteenth, one million, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And May third, one million, eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Motion to accept both of these, all in favor.
Aye.
These are accepted. Payroll expense.
One million, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And for five-three, one million, eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to accept both of these, all in favor.
Aye.
These are accepted as presented. Operating claims.
One million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventeen cents.
Move to approve is read.
Second.
To accept, and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
These are accepted as presented. Any claims to write up?
None.
Any monthly reports?
I have, I have weights and measures, date end April fifteenth, and I have county treasures monthly report month ending three thirty-one twenty-four.
Accept those. Any grants?
Jennifer Brower has one to present.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you.
Hey, so I'm here to seek approval for Howard Haven to receive a grant from FSSA for twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. I just talked to Bill, and he said he might have some maintenance that needs to be done so we can actually use some of that money for maintenance as well. But we did have some ideas on the back page to replace the dining room tables and chairs, some kitchen items, some carpet in some of the residence rooms, and new cabinets for storing craft and activity items for the residents. And I will be going to the county council on May twenty-eighth to work on a line item for that reimbursement grant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job. I'd make a motion to accept this grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept this grant, behalf of Howard Haven, all in favor.
Aye.
This grant is accepted.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you, Jennifer. County attorney issues.
I have nothing today.
Commissioner issues. Mr. Lipinski.
I spoke about the correctional officers, that's what.
Since I stole your thunder, right?
Yes.
Mr. Bray.
I just want to reiterate how, you know, I appreciate the corrections officers. When I was with the fire department, I had to deal with them a lot, going in, seeing what they had up against them all the time, going in on ambulance all the time, and that is a thankless job, and they, they do a wonderful job out there. We appreciate them. Thank you, guys, and gals.
Just want to remind people to vote tomorrow if you have not already. The new vote centers are open as of tomorrow morning. So we'll hear public comments.
I've been here for a while, so.
You have not.
I've come in. I start to twitch. I haven't been here to get anybody's butt.
Been worse more.
Wait, Brad Stone, he's from Howard County. I got a comment. So I'm looking over last meeting's minutes, and I noticed you guys passed a resolution to protect some water leaving the county. Good job, thank you. But you know what? That leads to me opening up. You protected water for the county. Want to come to my water? We're doing the green, we won't worry about writing to ordinance or, these are the things I get upset about. It's, it seems like it's always, let's look out for ourselves, and when it comes to people that put us up here, we're not gonna look out for them. And it gets aggravated, it just really does, because I know you guys are trying to do the right thing, I really do, but with this project out east, we should take more time on that ordinance, because I think we're kind of stuck with it. I don't know, I don't know if we can make amendments to it, I don't know if we can put a moratorium in place so we can look it over a little better with a finer tooth comb than what we have, so we can protect my well and my aquifer like you, like you're doing to counties, so we don't ship that water out of the state or out of our county, but I don't want to worry about contamination. And I know there was an email sent over the weekend to all three of you, because I was gonna send it, but somebody beat me to the, beat me to the punch, but, so the EPA is now weighed in, right, on contamination with PFOS, and now they're saying it's gonna be the landowner and the county's responsibility for cleanup if it's contaminated. You know what that tells me? I've already said it's gonna contaminate stuff, I don't want my taxpayer money used for this, and now that's what's gonna happen. So I've warned you, I made the warning, it wasn't listened to. Now that somebody's waiting and said, yeah, you're gonna have to pay for it if it's contaminated. That's why I think there should be a moratorium and make some amendments, because we need to protect everybody, not just the county, not just certain people that donate to campaigns or donate to parties. This should be for the people that live here, not just certain individuals, because that's kind of how it seems like it's looking, like the people that get more involved with the parties or with making large campaign donations tend to get listened to more than the loud mouths that come to the meetings. That's all I got. So, thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thanks, Brad. Thank you, Brad.
Sorry to jump in here sooner, but I didn't have all my facts there, so. That, that money that I talked about the state, there were two legislators, two representatives from, one of them's from Granger and the other's from Liberty, that, let me just kind of read this if you don't mind, issued following statement today in response to the State Budget Committee approving three million dollars for a South Bend sports complex, you know, to do some things up there, but they approved three million dollars to do that. I don't know why they couldn't do something like that here for something for a jail, it's probably a need a lot more than a sports complex. But there were two representatives that went before the budget committee and asked for this money, and it was approved. So, so it may be something there, I don't know, like you said, talking to representatives, but it sounds like there would be something there, and it may be too late, because the budget committee issue was on April the nineteenth. They approved, approved releasing the funds by Friday, so it may be possible, I don't know.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tim Henton, I live at seventy-three eighty East, four hundred South, Kokomo, Indiana. Again, talking about the rock quarries that's going in out there. I have talked to one of the residents that is in that little blue square, a better picture on the next page. They have bought his house with full intentions on lighting seven hundred east, eighteen inches at least on each side of the road. Has Mr. Shealan heard anything about that?
You say day, who's day?
Pardon me?
Who's day?
I'm assuming the gentleman that's starting the rock quarry in Tipton County, if you look on the back couple pages there, both them red squares they're drilling in, and they're drilling for tests, there are pictures of the truck that's drilling it. I, I personally talked to the gentleman that lives in the blue square, he's a county sheriff, because I'm seven hundred east, right by Tipton County. His name escapes me right now. But he said Mark Mariata has purchased that lane across from him, would be west of seven hundred, right there in Howard County. And I can't get no information where, you know, I'm looking for, what kind of protection is the county gonna put in place to protect people's well? I'm, another question I have is, you guys prefer, I'm gonna have my water tested now, so if it does go bad, I got records that it was good, does the county prefer anybody I get that done from? It just seems like there are a lot of work going on out, out in that area that you yourselves are not aware of, and Shealan's not aware of. I mean, they're starting to purchase properties. From what this gentleman told me, the sheriff told me that lives in that house, said they told him they're planning to widen the road eighteen inches on. From what this gentleman told me, the sheriff told me that lives in that house, said they told him they're planning to widen the road eighteen inches on each side and raise it. Because they're expecting anywhere from two to three hundred dump trucks a day. And I know there's no way we're going to stop this and I'm not, I'm not trying to get it stopped. I just want for myself and my neighbors protection for our well, because there again, if that is going, if it gets contaminated, it is on us to have to pay to have another welder. We've lived out there for twenty-five years, never had a problem.
Do you know how deep your well is?
Sixty foot. I know that, because I replaced the riser pipe. There are going to be a lot of houses affected by it, so.
And this is the, the one you're talking about, the one in Tipton County?
Well, that one's, it's pretty much done. I mean, other than the buildings being built, FBI buildings, just got assigned out there, getting ready to start building, the building, the gravel's down, equipment's starting to roll in. They're supposed to start blasting a lot.
I talked to the commissioners there in Tipton County, expressed those concerns when they were looking at that.
Now, the one that gotten sliding under the radar with me is the one that's in the, in the red square right there on the west side of seven hundred is Martin Marietta. And the picture I showed you where they're drilling, I live right there in that black square, right there on twenty-six. Where they're drilling at in that picture is a half a mile of south of twenty-six. Like I said, we know we ain't going to stop it. And we're not out for that.
You said that the red square is south of twenty-six?
Yeah.
You said these here.
My house is right.
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 That picture I showed you, uh, took where they were drilling is actually about right there where you wrote.
This is where you live?
Yes, this is the property that I talked to, the gentleman's the sheriff. And they're in the process of doing it or already have it done. I stopped on the road and talked to him the other day, because they're planning on widening this road. And this is the one Martin Marietta is supposedly at, the one in Tipton County is all right here. There doesn't seem to be a lot of work going on out there, like I said. Nobody knows.
Want to have Amber, County Highway Engineer come up and tell us a little bit about what, what she knows is going on out there?
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, just to make a few things clear, I believe what we're talking about is two different entities. Um, there is an entity that has worked through the process in Tipton County that's kind of out of our control. Um, they had a, a quarry come in and they've gone through the approval process in Tipton County, because their footprint is in Tipton County.
Right.
Um, where we, uh, kind of get involved is that five hundred south, which is Tipton County, is maintained by Howard County. So they have reached out to us regarding using the roads for ingress and egress just into their quarry. So we are currently looking at that, um, trying to work out something best for the county. Now, anything with Martin Marietta, nobody has approached us yet. We are aware that there is some digging equipment out on those properties. Correct, um, but it is on private property, um, so there is nothing that we can do about that. It is outside of our right away, it's outside of, um, we've looked at legal drains, we've looked at, um, any kind of easement that we have so that we can approach those people. We don't have any of that in those areas. So unfortunately, at this time, we have not been approached, we don't know if they're going to pursue anything. Um, and so our hands are somewhat tied at the moment. Um, once they do approach us to build within the county, that's when we can step in, uh, with some of those things.
Mark Marietta is definitely drilling.
Howard County. Yes.
And the other drillers, I'm pretty sure it's a drive.
Um.
Where it's located at, if it falls into Howard County, it's good work for this property, they're drilling out there.
Um, I do know that, um, the quarry from Tipton County, they are the ones that approached me and said, hey, there's somebody else drilling out there. Um, so, on the west side, yeah. So, as long as it's on private property and we have no easement or claim.
And we understand that, we're not trying to stop and we, we know we can't stop the矿场.
Yeah.
But.
But we have to be special attention.
Yeah, I mean, we're just trying to fill well, just big. Everything else, Bowman, part of the office, they're telling me I got very earthy, and that's no problem, we have no problem, just a well. We have perfectly good wells, twenty-five years, and also, we're going to go ahead and pay to have the best announced, we want records of this such day.
It sounds like you're taking good proactive steps.
Yeah, I did. I didn't know, I guess our reason for coming to the meeting, one, period. Think of what, two, but we'd just like to meet it on record, one, and, hey, this is a concern and a suspicion.
Mr. Shealan?
Yeah, Jack, I just remember, I was with you that day that we made those calls. And if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did talk to the supervisor, maintenance supervisor from Martin Marietta. Uh, and he did admit that they were doing some drilling. But if I remember correctly, he also, he also told us during that conversation that as of now, they had no plans to expand.
We did make some, Greg and I did make some phone calls, but as Amber said, if they are doing any digging, they're doing it on private property, so.
Right, yeah, and I, you know, I guess I'm looking for an answer. I'm looking, are there any protections for the state or the county to, hey, all right. Your guys' well is good, you've tested, you've done what you needed to do and now it's bad. There's no way that average person could, uh, afford a lawyer to, like, something like this.
Making phone calls to see what we can find out.
Appreciate it. Again, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, seeing none, motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Second.
I understand and adjourned.